Well, good evening. It is seven o'clock and time to start our Lenten Bible study. I hope we have people joining us tonight. Remember, if you can't attend one of our sessions, you can always watch these on our website. You simply go to, it's called Watch and Listen, and it's where we have all our recorded worship services. But instead of worship, you'll go to one on that, there's a list of things. One of them is Online Bible Study. Click that, and this Bible study will probably be right at the top of the list. Beautiful day today. It's, oh, and I've got a helper here tonight. Those of you who have been in my studies before, Becky used to always be online with me, reading Scripture and helping out. And then, as the pandemic eased, choir started back up in person, choir rehearsal, and so Becky was in choir rehearsal and hasn't been able to be with me. So I shifted when I started this Lenten study to Thursday night. I hope it works okay for people. It lets her be here with me and lets her read the Scripture. Don't believe anything that she puts on here as comments. She's kind of bad about sneaking in comments that I don't see until they're already posted. I was just saying earlier that if you miss a session and you want to see it, you can always go to our website under Watch and Listen and where worship services are listed. There's another entry called Online Bible Study. If you click on that, this study should be there. And but the cool thing about being online is you can post comments and answers to questions. I'm going to be asking some questions as we go through, and I love it whenever you post responses. It's a little awkward. Some of you have been on these studies with me before, but from the time that I ask a question until you hear it, several seconds have passed. It's just the way this thing works. And so I'm sitting here waiting for your response, and you haven't even heard the question yet. But I'll try to be patient and wait for your responses. I love to have your participation, and that's so much better than just hearing me yammering on. I always like to do a couple of announcements about things going on in the church. If I'm in person doing a Bible study, I like to make some announcements about things that are coming up. You know that we're in Lent now, and yesterday was Ash Wednesday. We had some really beautiful Ash Wednesday worship services, one in the chapel at seven, one down with Bethlehem Wily, United Methodist Church at noon. I did one at 2:30 in the chapel, and then we had a beautiful service with music and a full service in the sanctuary last night at 6:30. The cool thing about the one that I did or led at 2:30 in the chapel, we thought we might have fifteen, twenty people in there. You can get forty people seated pretty comfortably in our chapel. We had eighty-two. Was it eighty-two, Becky?
No.
Eighty-two people in there. It's so good. The fire marshal didn't show up, but we had chairs, as many chairs as you could get in there, and then people were standing around the walls. So it was, that was almost an impromptu service. We had heard a few people say, you know, it'd be good to have a midday service at the church since the other one was down at the Bethlehem Wiley Church. And so we added that one a couple of days ahead of time, and boy, that was a good turnout. Anyhow, we're in Lent this time leading up to Easter. I'm going to throw out one more date, April 9th. It's a Saturday, and we are going to get to do once again our community Easter egg hunt. We did one about three years ago, and it was awesome. And then the pandemic hit, and we couldn't have that safely, but we feel like we can do it safely this year. The Easter egg hunt is at, is it 11, Becky?
I guess.
So put that on your calendar. If you've got kids or grandkids, neighbor kids, April the 9th, a Saturday before Palm Sunday, and that will be at 11 o'clock. Kids will show up. We'll have those eggs hidden and have a great time. It's a good time to have community kids come into the church. And yes, before you ask, we are going to do Fundy Sunday this year on the Sunday after Easter. We want to try to get back into a regular routine. Okay, Lent. Somebody asked me in a thing I did the other day on Lent, where is it mentioned in the Bible? It is not. Lent is a time that the church focuses on to help us prepare for Easter by doing Bible study, by praying, being more faithful perhaps in our daily devotions, fasting, giving something up, and generosity. The theory is if we give something up, maybe we've got a little more to give to somebody else. Lent itself is not mentioned in the Bible, but all of those things, being in the Word, being more faithful in our prayer life, fasting, giving to others. Those are all Jesus's instructions to us. Hi, James Ford. I see you just joined us. Thank you for your greeting. So Lent is reminding us to do things that are mentioned in the Bible. People joining us might say, why on earth are you starting a Bible study with Luke chapter nine, verse 51? And I'm going to explain a little bit about that. We're only going to do part of the Gospel of Luke. We're going to go from 9:51 to the very opening part of Luke 19, and we'll see why. We're calling it Journey to Jerusalem. That's a big, strong hint. Let me just go ahead and say, Jesus turns on verse 9:51 to go toward Jerusalem, and it's his last trip to Jerusalem. He is preparing for his crucifixion. And so it's a wonderful chunk of Scripture for us to read as we prepare for Holy Week, the crucifixion, and more importantly, perhaps Easter. Let's talk a little bit about Luke before we jump right into the writing. It's a gospel, and Gospels are written to tell us about the life teachings, works of Jesus of Nazareth and to convince us that he was the Christ. So Luke says about to do that. What do we know about the writer Luke? Somebody chime in and tell me, what's something interesting? If you were sitting around a group and Luke had joined your group, and somebody says, you know Luke, tell us a little something about him, what would you say? This gospel writer named Luke, a doctor. Thank you, Lori. Boy, the internet's working fast tonight. He was a doctor. He traveled with Paul. Paul had a medical condition. Thank you, Christie, a physician. And he was probably Paul's physician. Boy, everybody's jumping on this doctor thing. Thank you, Susan. He definitely was, and he writes with the precision of someone trained in science. He says right at the beginning, Luke wrote two volumes. The Gospel is volume one, the Book of Acts is volume two. And he says right at the beginning, I'm basing my writing on careful research. So that tells us that he wasn't with Jesus. So that means he has, he's talked to people who were, probably a lot of people. In fact, a lot of people think he talked to Mary. He tells, he's got one of the most complete accounts of the birth of Christ. It's Luke who says Mary treasured these things and pondered them in her heart, and he may have heard about them from Mary. So he's a doctor. He writes with precision. He writes in an orderly way, not exactly chronological, but he puts things in the order with which they happened. Matthew doesn't do that. Matthew collects teachings. He's more interested in writing about themes and teachings than he is about the order things happen in. Luke, very orderly. So we know he was a doctor. He was also a Gentile. Matthew, Mark, and John were Jews. Matthew almost never explains anything Jewish. He thought everybody would know those things. Luke, being a Gentile, is kind of good to say, now Passover is something the Jews celebrate to remember their time leaving Egypt. As a Gentile, he's writing to Gentiles, and he helps explain Jewish things to us Gentiles. Let's see. We think that Luke wrote his Gospel sometime maybe AD 60 to 70. No doubt after the Gospel of Mark was written, because Luke takes a bunch of Mark's work and just drops it right into his Gospel. It's like, oh, this is good stuff. I'll use that. And he uses a lot of the same wording even that Mark used. Somebody tell me some of the, I'm going to get into the Scripture, but I just want to hit a little bit more on Luke as a gospel. What are some things that Luke emphasizes about Jesus or about his life teachings or whatever in his Gospel that maybe is a little more pronounced than in Matthew, Mark, or Luke, I'm sorry, or John? What does, if you were describing this Gospel, who would you say that this Gospel lifts up or shows Jesus spending more of his time and energy with? Who does Jesus champion in this Gospel is another way to ask that. Another question to think about in that is, who does Luke say Jesus died for? In other words, who did Jesus come for? I'm waiting on a, I'm waiting on a response, and I'm waiting patiently here. While I'm waiting for that, I will throw out this. Luke shows Jesus in prayer, probably more than any of the other Gospels. Okay, all including Gentiles, absolutely. It's a universal gospel. It shows that Jesus came for everyone. Oh, thank you, Nicky. Yes, to help women, poor, outcasts, marginalized, people who did not have power. I had a hut full of pastors in South Sudan tell me one time that Jesus came for them, not for me. And their point was, we're poor. They said, you come from a wealthy country. You probably compared to us are wealthy. They're right about that. And they said, Jesus came for us. I did ask them if they would share him with me, and they laughed and said they would. But it's a universal gospel. It's written for everyone, including Gentiles. Jesus came for everyone, including Gentiles, and also Jesus champions the marginalized. Thank you all. Okay, in the first nine chapters of Luke, I'm going to give it to you, talk about the Cliff Notes version. Jesus was born. He was baptized. He began his ministry. He chose his apostles from among those who are following him. He healed people, and he ministered mostly in the northern region of Galilee. If you were thinking about Jerusalem, I'm sorry, not Jerusalem, Palestine, Israel as being like Kentucky, Tennessee, and let's say Georgia. Georgia is Judea. It's the part down south. It's where the temple was. It's where Jerusalem is. Tennessee is Samaria. Jews typically didn't go through Samaria, and up north was Galilee, Kentucky. So Jesus spent most of his ministry in and around Galilee, and that's where Luke has had us emphasize his being. In the first part of Luke nine, Luke tells us Jesus sent out the twelve to do his work. Jesus learned that Herod had killed John the Baptist. Jesus fed the five thousand. Peter acknowledged that Jesus was the Christ. Jesus says, who do you say I am? And Peter says, you're the living Christ, the Son of God. And Jesus was happy to hear that. It finally meant that somebody's, they're getting it. They're starting to understand. Late in the chapter, Jesus was transfigured, and then Jesus began to predict his own death. Let me ask you, what happens in chapter nine when Jesus is transfigured? What happens there? Somebody chime in and tell me. Jesus and three of his apostles, Peter, James, and John run upon a mountain, probably Mount Hermon, and something happened while the four of them were there. This was a time of phenomenal affirmation for Jesus. It was, and what happened there on that mountain? It was God saying to Jesus, yes, you're doing the right thing. His glory was revealed. Yes. When he was transfigured, it says he became whiter than any color. He was lighter. He could barely look at him. He was so white and pure. Two other guys showed up, Moses and Elijah. Moses representing the law, Elijah representing the prophets. And God said again, as he had said in his baptism, this is my son. Listen to him. Peter didn't know what to say. Peter always had to say something. So he said, let me build some booths so you guys can stay here and hang around. And that wasn't the idea at all. This must have been the sign to Jesus that it's time for me to head to Jerusalem. Yes, thank you, Greg. Moses and Elijah there were with him. And Jesus came down off that mount of transfiguration, and immediately, he's asked to heal a young boy who is filled with evil spirits. And it's the one that the apostles are having trouble healing, and Jesus says some of these require prayer. The apostles were probably trying to do it on their own without God's help. And Jesus has come down from a mountaintop experience, literally, and is faced with real ministry. That happens to us all the time. We go away. We have a wonderful retreat. We have a spiritual reawakening or whatever, and then boom, we come home and life hits us. But it's those mountaintop experiences should prepare us for doing the ministry, doing the everyday work of being followers of Christ. And it's here that in verse 9:51, Luke says this. Jesus resolutely set out for Jerusalem. One of the translations, and I don't remember which one, says Jesus turned his face toward Jerusalem. It's another way of saying, you know, Jesus is, he's traveling about in Galilee. Now he's headed for Jerusalem. According to the Gospel of John, this is his third time to go to Jerusalem for Passover. John tells us about three different ones, including this one. Now Luke tells us that Jesus is on his way. That verse has always stood out for me. It's like Jesus realizes the time is right. It's, he's already told his disciples twice, I think it is, that he's going to die on a cross. They're not getting it, but he's told them, now it's time to show them. He'll tell them again, and we'll read that. And so as I was thinking about a Bible study for Lent, thought about it a few days, or prayed about it, and it's like, man, at this point where Jesus turned his face toward Jerusalem, from this point on, he's headed toward the cross and Easter. So why don't we go with him? Let's travel this journey with him. Jesus knows it's his last trip to Jerusalem, and so the things he does are important. The things he says are meant for us to remember them. All the things Jesus said that are recorded in the Gospels, we're meant to remember. But there's something about last things that make them even more memorable. Becky is just sitting over here getting really bored, so it's time for her to get to do some reading. Becky, if you would, chapter 10, verses one through 12. And I'm going to ask you, while she's reading, be looking for this. What is Jesus doing? In other words, what you're trying to accomplish by what he does and what she reads?
After this, the Lord appointed seventy-two others and sent them, two by two, ahead of him to every town and place where he was about to go. He told them, the harvest is plentiful, but the workers are few. Ask the Lord of the harvest, therefore, to send out workers into his harvest field. Go, I am sending you out like lambs among wolves. Do not take a purse or bag or sandals, and do not greet anyone on the road. When you enter a house, first say, peace to this house. If a man of peace is there, your peace will rest on him. If not, it will return to you. Stay in that house, eating and drinking whatever they give you, for the worker deserves his wages. Do not move around from house to house. When you enter a town and are welcome, eat what is set before you. Heal the sick who are there and tell them, the kingdom of God is near you. But when you enter a town and are not welcome, go into its streets and say, even the dust of your town that sticks to our feet, we wipe off against you. Yet be sure of this, the kingdom of God is near. I tell you, it will be more bearable on that day for Sodom than for that town.
Wow. Okay, so what is Jesus doing here? I haven't seen anybody post that. He is sending out seventy-two who are selected, but what's the purpose for that? What's, he's making a bit of a shift here, and it's an important one for us in the church, I think, to pick up on what's happening here. Remember, the time is short. It's going to be, that's about a sixty, eighty mile journey for him. And he's actually, Luke is not going to tell us about all the geography as Jesus travels across the Jordan and down south. The next time we see, okay, he is delegating work. And that's exactly right. He's taking the work that he has done himself, and he's assigning it. Earlier, he assigned it to twelve. They went out, did his work. They came back and said, wow. Even spirits, you know, are cast out whenever we do that in your name. Now he's sending out seventy-two. He's delegating work. He's expanding the ministry. He's sending the faithful force to spread the good word, to spread the word, absolutely. It's, Jesus knows that if his work is to be lasting and take root, others have to learn it. And this is exactly what's happening. Also, these people are going ahead of him. It's almost like an advance team. And they're introducing people to Christ. It still works that way. If we tell someone at work about what our faith means to us or how important it is that we believe in Christ, we're part of an advance team. And oftentimes, as we do that, we'll invite them to our church, or maybe we'll invite them to go to a church closer to their home if they don't live close enough to come to our church. We're the advance team, and somebody else will teach them. Somebody else will help lead them in worship. Somebody else will preach. So yes, he's exactly right, Greg. He's gathering support among the people where he is headed so that when he comes, they'll be ready to accept him. He sends them out in twos. Why send them out in twos? That means he's got seventy-two people divided by two. I believe that's thirty-six. He's got thirty-six teams. These thirty-six teams are going to encounter, as they go out, each of those two will encounter people together. So it's kind of like he's got thirty-six entities rather than seventy-two. Did he diminish the power of the group by dividing them up by twos? I don't think so. Why does he send them out in twos? There's a couple of reasons. Oh, Becky says, like the animals on the ark. I think there was a different purpose for those two coming onto the ark, Becky. You see what I have to put up with here? Yes, they're going to be witnesses. They will support one another. There is safety. Yes, thank you, in going in twos. I tell you, there's something else. There's accountability. They'll witness, yes. They'll witness for each other. They'll keep one another safe. And when one of them says, you know, I'm tired. I'm thinking, I'm going to, I think I may skip today. The other person's going to say, are you kidding? Let's go. If you've ever run or done exercise together, it's, I mean, as something to be healthier, it's so helpful to have a partner who will call you and say, hey, it's time for us to get on the road. And Jesus knows that, and so he says, go in twos. When we send people out to visit people who have worshipped with us at church, we always send them in twos for exactly the same reasons as Jesus did that. Jesus says, the harvest is plentiful, but the workers are few. We need more workers for the harvest. Here at Christ Church, you all saw just a week or so ago, we had a list of ministries in our church. I helped to prepare that list. All the directors helped prepare that and a bunch of other people, and we wound up with, I forgot, sixty-two or three items on a list. Why? Because the harvest is plentiful and the workers are few, and we need more workers. If you haven't done so, grab that list and check off some things. If you're doing something already, check it, but find something new to do because there's still work to be done. Jesus tells us seventy-two, whenever you go out, if you're welcomed into a home, go there. Don't go looking for a home that's got faster internet or better internet. Don't go looking for a place that's going to grill steaks every night. He's literally telling them to accept what's provided for them. Don't go looking around looking for better accommodations. We have to remind ourselves on mission trips sometimes of that very same thing. Sometimes we'll, oh my goodness, the water's cold when we take a shower. Well, guess what? We've got good drinking water, so. But anyhow, we have to remind ourselves that we're not here on vacation. We're here to do God's work. Why does he tell them, if you're not welcomed, shake the dust from your feet and head to the next town? That sounds harsh. Here's Jesus saying, if you're blessed, if you're welcomed, then stay in that town. Do your ministry. But if you're not welcomed, if there's no hospitality offered to you, if people don't want you there, shake the dust off your feet. In other words, don't even want to carry your dust with me and head to the next place. Why would he do that? By the way, he's not being harsh. Don't waste time. Yes. I think reach as many people as possible. There are so many people in the next town who've never heard of Christ, and they will welcome you. So don't waste your time on people who are hard, you know, they're thick-skinned. They're not going to be open to that. We even have to remember that today. We pray for people who turn us away. We don't give up, but we keep witnessing to those who will receive us. Sometimes churches spend more time chasing after people who are not coming to worship, people who are not being active in the church than they are reaching out to people who don't know the good news. And I think Jesus would say, may need to shake the dust off your feet. Let people know you missed them, but go after the ones who will be receptive. Becky, want to read 13 through 16 for us?
Woe to you, Corithen. Woe to you, Bessida. For if the miracles that were performed in you had been performed in Tyree and Sidon, they would have repented long ago, sitting in sackcloth and ashes. But it will be more bearable for Tyree and Sidon at the judgment than for you. And you, Capernaum, will you be lifted up to the skies? No, you will go down to the depths. He who listens to you listens to me. He who rejects you rejects me. But he who rejects me rejects him who sent me.
Okay, this is another tough saying. He's talking about some cities that are kind of on the outskirts of Jerusalem. They have mixed populations, and he's saying it's going to be better for them than some of the places where he performed a lot of his miracles, like Bethsaida. And he even says, Capernaum, oh my goodness, he had been headquartered there for three years. And he'll say, you will go down to the depths because you rejected me. You don't see any implications in that for today. Here are these places, I mean, what does it say to us today? Here are these places where Jesus has been. He's personally been there. And yes, some people believed. There was, we read about that at Capernaum, but most people didn't. It's sad when we see that, okay, a lot of people rejected him in Capernaum, and he's saying, it'd be better for Sodom in the judgment than for you. You will go down to the depths. Well, what's the implication for us? I don't think we're supposed to just go, too bad for you, Capernaum. I guess you're... I guess you're, guess you're lost." By the way, when we went to Israel a couple of years ago, we spent some time in Capernaum and, and saw the foundation of the synagogue where Jesus, um, taught. But, uh, you would, you would think Capernaum would have been, everyone there would have been a follower of Christ, but they weren't. I think, I think some of the implication for us is, for those of us who have the opportunity to know Christ, and we have Bibles that are, you know, they're easy for us to get, easy for us to obtain and study, we probably wanna be held more accountable than people who, uh, struggle to even get a Bible. I can remember in South Sudan, people could get an English Bible, but they couldn't read English. And their native language is Bari. And so those Bari Bibles were just precious. Sometimes there'd be two or three in a church. Well, I don't think those people are gonna be held as accountable for doing the things that are, that are taught throughout the, the Gospels as those of us who have all this opportunity. It's a, it's a troublesome passage. Becky, seventeen through twenty-one. And listen for the report back from the seventy-two. Luke's letting us know, they've come back. Listen to how it went.
The seventy-two returned with joy and said, "Lord, even the demons submit to us in your name." He replied, "I saw Satan fall like lightning from heaven. I have given you authority to trample on snakes and scorpions and to overcome all the power of the enemy. Nothing will harm you. However, do not rejoice that the spirits submit to you, but rejoice that your names are written in heaven." At that time, Jesus, full of joy through the Holy Spirit, said, "I praise you, Father, Lord of heaven and earth, because you have hidden these things from the wise and learned and revealed them to little children. Yes, Father, for this was your good pleasure."
Okay. How would you describe the, the, the progress report? Or the, maybe the, the, uh, end of project report from the seventy-two? What, what did they say when they returned back to Jesus to report in? Tough time? We spent all our trip shaking the dust from our feet? All is well, everyone is receptive. Uh, they've, they've discovered this power of the Holy Spirit that's working through them. Full of joy and amazed. This, to me, when I think about the times and the emotions that we read about with Jesus, uh, yes, uh, demons obey them, the people are accepting the word. I think this is the time when Jesus was the most filled with joy. Uh, I just see him high-fiving people. You know, it's like, yes, it's working. Uh, what, what makes him so happy about this? I think he sees that, my goodness, these seventy-two, they've, they've taken this on just as powerfully as the twelve. And, and I, and I think he sees that my work is gonna go on. Uh, and yes, as Tommy says, people are accepting the word. And so Jesus is thinking, wow, this, this is just going to explode. It's gonna multiply. And so he's very thankful that what he is attempting to do is working. I, I tell you something else I tend to think of with this, and it's, it's using modern-day language that they didn't use then at all. But the twelve, you know, those guys were apostles, he sent them out first. I tend to think a little bit, uh, like they are, uh, they're clergy. You know, they've been, they've, they've spent the most time with Jesus, they've, they've had more training. Uh, they've given up their jobs, fishermen and tax collectors and that. They've, they've taken on following him as their vocation. These seventy-two, I think of them as laypeople. And, and, and Jesus sees, oh my goodness, look what, six times my twelve, look what they've done. Way too often, laypeople think they're limited or, or don't recognize that, my goodness, their ministry is every bit as powerful and more numerous than that of clergy. That's a great affirmation for people, kind of that next wave that's being sent out. Remember now, Jesus is moving steadily toward Jerusalem. Somebody said it earlier. Uh, part of what these seventy-two is doing is, is they're kind of like an advanced team. They're going ahead of Jesus, and they're preparing people for his coming, his coming to Jerusalem. Okay, Becky, if you would, read twenty-two through twenty-four. When, and I'm gonna ask you a question here. Uh, he's gonna say, "Nobody knows the Father except by knowing the Son." No one can, okay, what, what does he mean by that? Listen as Becky reads this.
All things have been committed to me by my Father. No one knows who the Son is except the Father, and no one knows who the Father is except the Son and those to whom the Son chooses to reveal. Then he turned to his disciples and said privately, "Blessed are the eyes that see what you see, for I tell you that many prophets and kings wanted to see what you see but did not see it and to hear what you hear but did not hear it."
So, sometimes, um, sometimes we use this, um, this passage almost to be exclusive. But Jesus is saying, if you really want to know the Father, you gotta know the Son. Jesus has come to reveal the nature of the Father. If you know Christ, if you know the Son, you know the Father. And, uh, and, and so he, he is saying, "Come to know me, come to know who I am and what I teach." Uh, we come next to, uh, we come next to a wonderful parable. Uh, and, and it's, uh, let's see, Becky, start at verse ten. Let's see, ten thirty. Let's see how that begins. Okay. Let me set that up just a little bit. We're, we're, we're about to run out of time here. Time passes so fast. Someone came to Jesus and said, "So, how do I get eternal life?" And Jesus says, "Well, obey the commandments. What does the law say?" And this guy goes, "Well, it says, 'Love God, all your heart, mind, soul, and strength,'" and it also says, "Love your neighbor." Jesus says, "Yes, though, that's true." And the guy goes, "So who is my neighbor?" And then Jesus tells this story. Maybe instead of reading it, we'll just sort of tell it, because I wanna read another, um, no, no, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead and read it, Becky, thirty through thirty-seven.
In reply, Jesus said, "A man was going down from Jerusalem to Jericho when he fell into the hands of robbers. They stripped him of his clothes, beat him, and went away, leaving him half-dead. A priest happened to be going down the same road, and when he saw the man, he passed by on the other side. So too a Levite, when he came to the place and saw him, passed by on the other side. But a Samaritan, as he traveled, came where the man was. And when he saw him, he took pity on him. He went to him and bandaged his wounds, pouring on oil and wine. Then he put the man on his own donkey, took him to an inn, and took care of him. The next day, he took out two silver coins and gave them to the innkeeper. 'Look after him,' he said, 'and when I return, I will reimburse you for any extra expense you may have.'" Which of these three do you think was a neighbor to the man who fell into the hands of robbers? The expert in the law replied, "The one who had mercy on him." And Jesus told him, "Go and do likewise."
Folks, that may be the most powerful lesson that we get out of Luke, chapter ten. This person says, "Who's my neighbor?" And right away, I don't know about you, but right away, I think about the Kelmonds and the Avrets. And, uh, you know, the people who live right around me, I think of them as neighbors. I know that's, I know it's more than that. But Jesus tells this parable, this story, to illustrate a tough truth. We hear "good Samaritan" as the name of that, and we think, "Oh, good Samaritan, Samaritans must be good." Actually, they were hated. The Jewish people hated Samaritans. They viewed them as the enemy, because, remember us talking about Kentucky, Tennessee, and Georgia? Tennessee was Samaria. And when the, when the exile happened up north, Kentucky and, and Tennessee were taken off to, to Assyria. And the Assyrians brought foreigners in and settled the part that was Tennessee, Samaria. And this, and the Jews there were supposed to not intermarry with foreigners, but they did. And so the Jews viewed that as they became unclean, they intermixed. And so there was a lot that separated Jews and Samaritans. Samaritans worshipped, uh, not at Jerusalem, but up in, uh, up in Samaria. And, uh, so a Jewish person would have hated a Samaritan and vice versa. If you were traveling from Georgia to Kentucky, you went over into North Carolina and up into Virginia, and then over, uh, into Kentucky or over into North Carolina and then into Kentucky. You didn't go through Tennessee. Jews did not travel through Samaria, because they despised them. Now here a priest, a preacher, a Levite, a, a, a layperson, uh, in today's language, we'd say a church person, saw this man hurt and lying by the road, perhaps afraid, perhaps in a hurry, not wanting to become unclean ceremonially, they passed him by. And here comes the enemy and stops, and just is so lavish. He put him on his own donkey. Read that as he put him in his own SUV. You know, the, the guy's beaten up, he's probably bloody. Put him in his own SUV. He took him to a place where he could get help, and he paid for it. And Jesus says, "Now who's the neighbor?" So, we're taught to go across nationalistic lines, we're taught to go across racial and ethnic lines. Everyone is loved by God, everyone is our neighbor. I can remember going on a mission trip to Cuba. And I was a little, you know, concerned about that, and having people say, "Why would you be going to help people in a communist country? Well, they're our neighbors." Uh, as it turns out, they're beautiful people. They, they, they love God. Uh, I mean, not everybody in Cuba's Christian, but we were going to help, uh, Christians there rebuild a church. So, uh, everyone is our neighbor, and that's a powerful, powerful lesson. It's one that's hard to remember. We tend to think about our neighbors, not just as people who live close to us, but people who believe close to us, people who are like us. And Jesus is telling us, "No, stretch yourself. Get across those lines. Everyone is your neighbor." Becky, one more chunk of reading. Thirty-eight through forty-two, please.
As Jesus and his disciples were on their way, he came to a village where a woman named Martha opened her home to him. She had a sister called Mary, who sat at the Lord's feet, listening to what he said. But Martha was distracted by all the preparations that had to be made. She came to him and asked, "Lord, don't you care that my sister has left me to do all the work by myself? Tell her to help me." "Martha, Martha," the Lord answered, "you are worried and upset about many things, but only one thing is needed. Mary has chosen what is better, and it will not be taken away from her."
Okay, thank you. Uh, if we're in a classroom together, almost always, somebody says, "Which one are you?" And guys, you're included, "Are you more like Martha or are you more like Mary?" And, uh, if I know people well, I can look around the room oftentimes and say, "Oh, there's a Martha and there's a Mary." We all, uh, we're kind of composites, right? Sometimes we're like Mary, sometimes we're like Martha. And Jesus is not saying, you know, "Don't do any work, don't, don't prepare meal." Uh, if, if everybody had that attitude, this would be a tough place to live in. Somebody's gotta do some work. But what he is saying is, we need to have our priorities. Jesus is in Bethany. Bethany is only, I forgot, I, I wanna say six miles from Jerusalem. He's getting close. Jesus needs companionship. He needs to be, uh, he needs to be around some friends. Martha and Mary and their brother Lazarus are those friends. And Martha is distracted by the busyness of preparing a big meal. Jesus didn't need a big meal. He needed some quiet time with friends. And that's why he's commending to us, listening to him, rather than the busyness of life. He's not saying, "Sit around and don't accomplish anything," but he's saying, "Be careful of your priorities." We can, we can be so busy in church that we miss the point. And this is saying, get the point, even if, uh, even if sometimes some of the busy work maybe doesn't get done. I, I, we, uh, so, that, that, uh, Mary and Martha, it's, I, I don't think we should necessarily call ourselves one or the other. We just have to remember why it is that Jesus commended Mary and her willingness to sit and listen and be empathetic with him. Folks, we're out of time, and I'm not gonna run over. We've had such a good, uh, a good, uh, attendance tonight. And Barbara Whitaker, I see that you're on. It's so good to, to see your name pop up. There's been several names there that have, I haven't had you in a study lately. It's so good to see you there. And, uh, I look forward next Thursday night at seven. Uh, thank you, Greg. It's good to be back with all of you. If you enjoyed this study, this is gonna sound like a PBS promo, but if you enjoyed this study, tell somebody about it and invite them to join us next Thursday night at seven on Facebook Live, or to go to our website and, and watch it, uh, this one, uh, between now and then. We, we will do chapter eleven next week. We're gonna take chapter two at, at a time. God bless you all, and I'll see you later. Bye.